Our, 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 kind of, and your band.
Oh, so I'm up first?
Uh, Chris.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you for coming today to meet the candidates for village council. We're glad you're here to engage in this important conversation about our community's future. Today's morning has designed to give each candidate equal time and to keep the discussion respectful and informative. Before we begin, I'd like to go over a few ground rules. Each candidate will have equal time to speak. Please hold a pause in common until the end. Audience questions were submitted writing and will be asked by me during the final portion of the program. Each candidate may now have one minute to introduce themselves. We'll go in alphabetical order by first name. Doug, you may go first.
Thanks. So my name is Doug Gray. I've been a full-time resident here in Grand Rapids for over twenty-five years. Uh, the town's been in my, you know, in my life pretty much forever as long as my memories go back. As I peed down on the river, I was just twenty-two campers down the river since I was three years old. Uh, so I've got a perspective of being, you know, an out-of-towner and now the perspective of being a full-time resident.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Soling. I have been in Grand Rapids for over twenty-five years. Moved here as a result of a job placement, uh, worked out in, uh, Northwood for a while and then a few other places. But I invest in this community heavily. I have multiple properties and I receive working on them all the time. I am a self-made person. I put myself through school. Um, always working and going to school at the same time. I did very well in school. I've done very well professionally. Um, I had a great career because I went to Chris, uh, before and she was a teacher and loved her job. I love Michael as well. I love working. I retired in January and, um, it's false what they say that you're born when you retire because retirement rocks. Uh, there is so much fun to be had out there. Uh, so I went to the school and you get retired.
Yes, I did.
So it's fun.
Free, yes.
Uh, I'm very hardworking and love to work consistently.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate that. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Jenny Bolton. Um, I moved to Grand Rapids here a couple of Christy about two and a half years ago. Um, we took from Carver. Uh, I grew up there. I took a Carver high school. Uh, I moved to the bachelor, the bachelor for about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three years and then, uh, once all my kids graduated, uh, Christie and I said, uh, let's move to someplace where we want to have quite so much upkeep. We moved to water for a while, mommy for a while. Did the kind of thing and she decided she needed something to use. We moved back to Grand Rapids because we had a yard and gardens and everything else. Um, but we, we love it here. We've come here, um, all of off, uh, throughout our lives and stuff. Visiting the town, visiting the canal. It's just something special that we have here and I love to try to maintain that and, um, but the same time I can see that we grow, um, and we not like to, um, try to maintain our way of life here. It's, it's a, it's a nice place. I don't want to hear a lot of comments like that. So that's where, that's where they.
Your name was Mike.
Hi, my name is Pat Nagel. Uh, we moved here back in March of last year. My wife and I, um, moved to Lido. We've lived in Soling for a while. Our kids went to school. And, but I think it was Christmas Eve of twenty-three, I was messing around on the internet looking at offices and saw the Grand River offices for sale. And my wife used to build there thirty-plus years ago and businesses pop. So within a few months, we moved and came up to Grand Rapids and we absolutely love it. Uh, I'm the newbie on committee. I'm still learning a lot about Grand Rapids. The people, the politics, the businesses. Uh, as far as business goes, uh, I ran a business for thirty-nine years. Maybe trucking lower in Walgreen, Ohio. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but you'll see the big blue vans on, on the trucks. That's me. Uh, my brother and I owned it and my soul may after the business then last year retired. And retirement is very busy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Seaton. I have a successful career as a pharmacist and operation to start up companies. I'm retiring now. I'm with my husband. We're devoting our energy in the transformation of our property to a native-friendly habitat. We enjoy spending more time with our family. Uh, my contributions to the village's business and residential communities over the past five to six years has been a joy for me. I intend to continue my volunteer time and resources as opportunities arise. I believe the candidates and existing administration will enable strong leadership to help our village see the challenges that face us today and into the future. I wish to continue to be part of that. However, actively reflecting on my options and having a hard-to-hard discussion with my family, I've decided to withdraw my candidacy for village council. And I want to thank everybody for their support. And I would love this community and will continue to work to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Becky.
Welcome.
We now will begin with a few general questions for all candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. Doug, you will go first. What do you see as the most pressing challenge for our village and how would you address it?
Well, I see the most pressing thing is, uh, is the growth is taking place. I have, it's the new houses out on Thursday and I'm curious to see where that goes. You know, if that's going to expand. Uh, but you can't, you know, can't just stay the same as we are. You're either going to grow or you're going to decline. So it's, it's important to manage that growth. Uh, so that's, that's probably the biggest thing actually going forward that's going to affect the future of Grand Rapids is, uh, how, how we continue to grow.
Same question.
What do you, can you?
Sure. What do you see as the most pressing challenge for our village and how would you address it?
Okay. So for me, one of the things that I've brought up when I originally came to council is we need a vision statement. We need a needs assessment and we need a strategy. Why a vision statement? We have very, we have several very important organizations in our community, probably ten, eleven, twelve organizations. It would be nice that we all saw a common vision for the village and when we do our events, our events are promoting the common, uh, vision. Uh, and we need a needs assessment because we need to know what's important to the residents. Is it important for you for us to save the pool? Is it important for us to have town hall renovations? Is it important for us to revitalize the downtown? It's very important for us. And the strategy is the plan of how you get all that done. And you'll see very successful communities have these plans, the strategies that say who we are today, who do we want to be? And you've invested your money in order to. Thank you.
Um, I would say part of the biggest thing, um, is business mind. I'm talking with a lot of the business owners in town here, um, developing our strategy and they really thought, um, keeping their doors open. I'd like to kind of set up some kind of strategy where we can get the businesses together, collaborate with them as a council and figure out what their needs are and how we can move forward to help them be successful. We don't have small businesses in town. The town's got a fine, um, I'm doing a bachelor for twenty years. I've seen that firsthand. I've seen businesses closing doors. And now all they have on there is, is an empty storefronts and people are spinning around. They're leaving town. And I want to see this small town that I have. It's two, we've got two other things here. We've got so many resources that are community tests. There would be the two river, um, the businesses that we have in town here. Uh, the village residents are fantastic. I'd like to see it, um, seem to get more involved in the community and stuff through various organizations. We've got a good thing here. We need to keep it going.
Um, I see a, a big, um, with the businesses and, uh, we're not following people coming to Grand Rapids or we would have more foot traffic. Uh, and the businesses would be succeeding. I don't know if council needs to get involved with the businesses if that's their job. We can sure make the area more beautiful. Um, and I also believe we need to work with the township more. We also need to work with, um, the Chamber of Commerce. I, I really think we can really grow this area with some good thoughts back and forth. Uh, another thing is the, uh, participation of the residents. I'm glad you all showed up today. We've got nine hundred and fifty-plus people in town and we've got twenty-five here. Um, I'd like to see some more involvement in the community as well. And, um, as, as everybody else said, we've got some great natural resources here with the river, canal. Uh, we should be doing it much better and I think with the right vision and intent.
Thank you.
Now, question number two, and we'll start with you, Lynn. What motivates you to run for council and how do you bring your skills to the role?
So what motivates me to run for council is that, like, so many people that I hear, when you drive into this village, you see its potential. You know this is a, a little charm, right? With all kinds of potential, but we haven't realized that potential. And the skills that I bring are thirty years of strategy development. You don't hear me say strategy twelve times today because it's so important. You have to know where you're going, have to plan for it, or you simply won't get there. Um, so I'm passionate about this village. I invest in this village. I've lived in this village. I chose this village to live in. That was important to me. I chose it. I lived all over the United States and chose this place. This is important to me.
Um, one way to be kind of across another, um, to be honest with you, I never really thought about getting involved in politics. I just kind of looked at it as something that, I don't know. People didn't have a lot of time on their hands when it did or more involved in business aspects and stuff, things like that. Um, but talking to a lot of people, um, I realize how passionate, um, the citizens are, Grand Rapids are over the top. And how I think that if you can get more people involved in things, that's, that does nothing to benefit the community. It makes it better. The more people that you have involved, the, the better you can, you can make something. Uh, there's a lot more ideas, uh, the skills that I probably have and, and a people person, I like to talk to people. I'm a good listener. Um, my wife always kind of says every once in a while, you don't talk. And it's like, well, I like to listen because you learn things when you listen to people. And, um, I'm passionate about taking that attribute and hopefully turn it into something where it benefits the people that, um, live around it. That's important. That's, that's why I'm here.
Um, I mentioned we moved back here in March of twenty-four and I've been very busy with the landscape. I have a lot of things in the house that I really hadn't paid attention to village council until Christmas of twenty-four. Once I started watching the meetings and getting to know some people, I realized our council is broke the way it currently is. As far as my skills go, um, I ran a business for thirty-nine years. When I left, our annual revenue was forty million dollars a year through all the companies. I was president of logistics, vice president of operations, only because my brother was older than me or he would have a present. But a family sheet, budgets, uh, negotiations, insurance, banking. I've done all that. I see some great opportunity for this, uh, village. We've got five point two million dollars sitting in the bank during quarter or percent.
Jesus.
That should have been at four or five percent. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in interest. We are not earning very much. So when you hear council saying we don't have money, they have five point two million dollars, that could be about seven million that has been invested correctly. That's what I do. I, I look for areas of opportunity when it comes to numbers. I'm a numbers guy. I do math in my head. And this town needs to change.
Now.
So what motivates me to get, uh, to run for council is just a desire to be involved. I always have been that way, but, uh, my job as overall truck driver prevented me from getting more involved because I would be unable to attend the meetings. But I find that any time I'm involved with my church, uh, got involved, uh, recently with doing some work with the yards council, the chamber of congress, promoting rally days, and I just find it so fulfilling because, you know, everybody's like, oh, thanks, thanks. You did so much. I only did a little bit and I get so much back just from, you know, I get as much back as I did from putting into it. You know, that I get a, a real sense of sense that I do to be part of a team and be involved. And that's my goal is to be part of the team and be involved. I don't have a big sweeping agenda. I don't have a bunch of huge ideas. I'm more of a collaborator. And I think there right now that council needs more collaboration. And that's where, that's what I'm offering to bring to the table.
Now on to question three, and we'll start with you. How do you balance the needs of residents, local businesses, and visitors to ensure your village's thrive?
Um, just by listening, seeing what each end is, it's important. I've talked to several of the residents in town here, what they like to see, um, I've learned from the business owner who, what their needs are. It just, I think collaborating with people, I, and then you're going to hear that a lot, but it's, it's something that's important. The more you listen to people, the more you're gaining ideas. And you can go, you know, to council or whatever, you can, you can discuss with them what the villages, the, the villages, the businesses are asking for. And hopefully you can put that into practice. Like I said, I'm not one to, um, I don't have an agenda. I'm here just to help more or less and get involved and, and make things better for everybody, the businesses and townspeople alike. It's, it's, that's my mind, so.
Um, when you put the three together, I think you have to bring the town. And to do that, uh, I know Lynn brought up, uh, signage. Um, there's only a few old wooden signs. When you leave town and come into town, there is a pan sign on, out here. Uh, we could do some signage, some more advertising. Um, we need to bring people here. Bringing people here then makes the stores better, puts money in their pockets, which raises the value of the homes that makes the residents happy. Uh, once there's some monies coming in, we can lower taxes. We can, uh, fix the pool without putting a levy out out there for the people. I just think we need to get everybody excited about this village, uh, from the outer communities. I was walking up the street today and there was a group of seven young high school boys walking up all with their shirts off. My wife followed them out of my shirt. But it was good to see the youth come here and I wanted to look to and ask them, why are you here? What are you doing? But they just came off about and they're going to spend some time and some money here in Grand Rapids. We need more of that. And I think, um, with us working with the Chamber of Commerce, I know we just okayed some advertising buttons. Um, Lynn, you brought up some benches. That's a, I think that's a great idea. And before I forget, just a little bit, I want to thank you for all the time you do donate. And I know you mentioned you were out there with the canal linked and all. And I don't feel it is the responsibility of our citizens to be doing what the government should be doing. That canal needs to be cleaned up by the village. And we should have proper equipment for that. But I wanted to, before I forgot, I wanted to point out that Doug does volunteer a lot this time.
Can you do any questions?
Absolutely. How do you balance the needs of residents, local businesses, and visitors to ensure the village's thrive?
Well, I think the biggest thing to do is, as previously mentioned, probably by more than one candidate, is to try to get people involved. And you need to create a welcoming environment. Sometimes people just need to be invited to the table in order to, to listen to them and hear what their ideas are. And sometimes things seem so obvious to some, but they're not obvious to others until actually you start kicking these ideas around and that's back to the collaboration. And you know, if I'm on council, the best thing I can do to serve all three groups equally is to be consistent. You know, whatever I, nobody's ever going to agree with everything you decide. But they shouldn't be surprised I went to decide to be consistent in your dealings with people and businesses. So that they know to a certain extent what to expect, you know, going into it.
So I've balanced the needs of the residents, businesses, and guests. Um, I think Pat's correct in that we have to bring more people into town. It has to do with marketing. Um, the Chamber of Congress is working on some of that, but it does include signage and benches and, and the vision of who we are. Uh, Nick was right in that it's about collaboration between the different organizations. Every organization in this town is carrying the weight of some of this, or even of some of this community. We need to get that energy together and agree on what the vision is. And, um, it, it is about collaboration among those organizations. And then, um, it, it's also about having a plan. And that plan has got to be transparent to everything. We need transparency. Pat mentioned a number of five million, like, two in the bank. How many people in this room knew we had that much money in the bank? How many people knew we didn't have an investment problem? How many people knew that we had money available to help with benches, advertising the pool, but we weren't even using our money properly? How many of you knew that? We have to have transparency with them. Thank you.
Next, we'll move into rotating questions. For each candidate will answer first with up to two minutes. The other candidates may then add a brief response, up to one minute each. We're going to rotate who goes first each time to keep things fair. So we'll start with Pat with question number one. How should the village prioritize infrastructure, roads, utilities, and parks over the next four years?
Um, if you take a walk past my house, you'll see the sidewalk is almost at forty-five degree angle. Um, I think the infrastructure of this town, we just had a couple of water lakes. Uh, there's, I think it was five hundred dollars in water plant. And we need to go through the whole system and fix it. Uh, the downtown area could use a little cleaning up. Whether we help the businesses do that or the building owners, uh, some paint, um, maybe some mortgage loans to help them out, uh, because they don't have their money right now. And the canal is another major issue that isn't cleaning. I walk my dogs down there and you've got two feet of dead weeds that are brown. And then weeds everywhere, trees everywhere, uh, it's, again, it's one of our best assets and we're not keeping it up. Um, that's how I, I would, I wrote that. So it does issue.
I think the sidewalks are, are a big issue in part because, uh, at least from my perspective, I've always had a little bit of confusion about how exactly that works. Uh, when we replace the sidewalks in front of our house, we pay for it ourselves. And I know the town has been doing some sidewalk work, but I think there needs to be a, a coherent policy and all the residents need to be aware of that. And where would that be? Whether it's the town's responsibility, whether the citizens can assess for it, or whether it's a combination of the two. And maybe it's a shared cost, but, uh, I'd like to see a more coherent sidewalk policy.
So in my last position, I was responsible for over twenty-five million dollars of capital expense. That includes buildings, roads, equipment, et cetera. And what you typically do is have, uh, uh, assets replacement strategy. So you look at your backhoe and say, how many homeowners do you typically bill on that? So it's ten thousand hours or twelve thousand hours. Where are we now? How often do we use it? When does it need to be replaced? Pat's right about the canal. We have been literally negligent in maintaining that canal, which is one of our greatest assets. We did clear cutting this year, which in my opinion is absolutely wrong for that canal. Um, but there was no plan enough. So asset management, replacement for the useful life gives us a plan on how we, uh, go forward.
Um, I'm not sure if we have any kind of flood mitigation pipe or field currently in town, but I know that we had floods here in the past and businesses have suffered, residents have suffered from it. Um, I think it's something that we need to look at as a council and figure out what we can do to make the effects of that negligible and make it so we can keep our downtown intact and safe and the residences, residences that live down here close to the canal, um, keep them safe. Um, I also would like to see something to do with our parks in town here. Um, specifically the one out like the library. It didn't seem like there's a whole lot there for, for residents and their kids to do. Um, I'd like to see something that maybe brought up like, you play on a football, um, maybe use shelter houses, things like that. So that way when people come to town, they have a place to go. And, uh, their, their kids at the top of the residence, uh, who have children can go and, and spend some time.
The next question, Doug will go first. What role should council play in supporting local events and tourism?
Well, tourism is probably a fun plus for, you know, for businesses here in town. You know, a lot of you there, I know are long-time residents and a lot of us are old enough to remember when we had our own grocery store and our own hardware and all that. And that, you know, those days probably aren't coming back. That's not going to be neat to our stock now. You know, once the big boxes started propagating up everywhere and once we started buying there, you know, that was kind of, kind of, kind of the end of that picture.
So, can I?
Yes, okay.
Uh, so as far as the council supporting local events and tourism, I think it's critically important that the council is involved and engaged. If you look at White House, they actually have a social media, uh, position on their, uh, government and they market the heck out of that community. It's fantastic. Um, I would like to be part of the, of the village that the mayor is actually, the grand marshal of our parade. I would like that. I would like the council to support the events that we have and not make it difficult with their policies, with their lack of support for advertising, with, uh, food truck restrictions, et cetera. I want the policies to be supportive of, of the bringing tourism here to this community.
Um, that's probably our, our main thing. The reason for the town is tourism, the downtown area. Um, I'd like to see, uh, some revitalization of downtown, helping the businesses and stuff. I think it is important that council helps with businesses to promote tourism. The people need, at least they come to town. Uh, if they come to town, they see something that's exciting, um, it's more active and back. And for other people too, they'll go on tell their friends and tell their neighbors, this is a good place to go. Um, and see on social media, it's got their, um, Facebook page that deals with, um, small towns in Ohio. I just heard about the landscape before we came down here today. There's probably twenty or thirty small towns in Ohio. They put on the wood. It's the best small town in Ohio to visit. Grand Rapids was number one on that list. And that's important. If, if other people are talking about coming here, we need to keep it fighting, particularly with black people. I think that'll help, um, help generate meaning and help them deliver their tax base a lot better.
Uh, I think Lynn brought up some awesome things. Market, market, marketer. And the council needs to work with groups that want to bring business here, the food truck. Uh, it was a terrible shame what happened for the rally, uh, rear days that they said, no, the food trucks, because they didn't have the names of the food trucks in town. They should have welcomed those. And as far as the council members getting involved with the events, I go to as many events as I attend. I've seen Rick Tolls at, at events. Um, I saw Rachel at one event. I think Rick, you were working it, working the door. But, uh, I, I don't see council getting involved in that. Lynn, you were awesome and you both were good and you did a great job of that. But I think council needs to be more active, take more ethical in, in what's going on around town. Instead of just doing your council, going home and living your life, I think you need to get down there, get out.
The next question is for President. How can we attract or retain small businesses in our village?
It's a really good question. Can we attract or retain them? So to retain them, we have to show that through our actions, not our words, through our actions, that we're supporting the businesses. It's through marketing, advertising, it's doing facelifts on the buildings, extensions. It's, uh, creating a theme. Marketing, how are we going to market, uh, Grand Rapids? So, you know, we've had some discussions about it. Are we the law like capital? Well, I think we're putting claims that maybe with a catfish, uh, capital. Uh, we need to market ourselves. We need to market ourselves so that people can get behind us and push that. How do you draw people in? Make it easy to do business. We shouldn't, the commercial biller shouldn't be paying more for their water than the residents. The tax base needs to be neutralized. There's so many ways that we can manage the cost of doing business in Grand Rapids that we are not looking at today and we need to.
It is important to maintain the small businesses that we have. I agree with the council, we need to make it so it's more friendly as far as your taxes and stuff. I think that to keep our businesses profitable as far as bringing new small business. I've noticed that we've had a couple of the buildings purchased recently. I think that people see that we are friendly small businesses. I think more businesses are more, people are more apt to come to town or actually set up shop. It's important to keep the downtown vibrant, so that's, that's my approach to it.
A lot of emphasis for business has been the downtown. Everybody's pushing to downtown, to downtown, to downtown. Once you leave the area and start going around, there are some other businesses in the area. We forget about them. The McCady Outdoor, Saylor Industries up here, they're doing great things. I think we need to get them more involved and I'm not saying bring in a multi-million square foot warehouse in the area, but we can track some other businesses. Those other businesses bring more residents, more residents bring more revenue. I still love being a small village. I don't want to see growing up to the tens of thousands of residents, but we need some good economic growth. And by giving some of those companies tax breaks, as Lynn mentioned, lower water rates, lower electric rates, whatever the case may be, we need to attract some people, but it's important.
I think the most important thing that council and the village can do is number one, provide the infrastructure. I mean, the town has to be, you have to like what you see when you drive down that hill. You know, the roads need to be kept, the pavement needs to be clean. The lights, it's several things, the lights need to be kept in order to attract more businesses. I don't know if everybody's aware of this or not, but the council recently allocated money for advertising, so I think that's a step in the right direction. But, you know, they're collaborating with the historical side of the Chamber of Commerce to run targeted ads on TV to try to attract businesses. And another thing they can do is, I'm not familiar with what the process is right now with your company in town starting a business. You guys probably know, but it needs to be made, you know, clear and transparent and friendly so that businesses sort of attract, or whatever, not like, I don't have to jump through all those, it's just to open up shop.
The next question, Nate will start with you. What are your ideas for improving communication and transparency between council and residents?
Let's go through an updated village website so that all of our financials are easy to access tremendously. I think our social media presence could be better too, if there was a social media paid to the council to go out and actually let the employees know. Maybe start some kind of mailings or something where you can send them a newsletter out to the village, just kind of let them know what council's working on, things like that. There's all kinds of things you can do if you sit down and talk to people on the council and try to collaborate with them, figure out how to best keep the village on loop on what's going on, but it's important.
Can you just, you have a little bit of data to keep that here. Thank you.
Hey, how are you doing? He's got, I got a good hope. Could you repeat the question again?
What are your ideas for improving communication and transparency between council and residents?
Okay, we need a website. We need somebody posted somewhere that states what, how much money we have. Post a budget, post all our expenses. Right now, we've got a couple of different websites in the area that I recognize. We've got the heart for Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids in the flow one night. I think we need a government website and put all this out there so they know. And right now, we're only getting five people to come to council meetings, held over at the town hall. And I think it's embarrassing that we might have three to four hundred people a week there, everywhere that's involved. We need to get the citizens more involved. I think by sharing information with them, that might help them more involved.
Well, I think the best way, one of the good ways for communicating is right now, private citizens are broadcasting the council meetings on Facebook. But I think the village needs to take that over, you know, maybe have a little more professional setup so that people that can't attend the meetings or maybe don't want to go to meetings or maybe just want to stay involved can watch what's going on, can see everybody there, can hear everything there, and get a better idea of what's actually taking place in these meetings. And as a council person, I think the biggest thing one needs to do, what many of these people in this room have done, is just to get out and get involved. When there's an event going on, volunteer. You don't have to be in charge. You don't have to spend a lot of money. You don't have to have a technical know-how sometimes. You just need to lend your hands. And I think if the council people got out amongst the people more, they would have a better idea of what's important to me.
So in, in order to provide more transparency, I agree with the website. Our website could use some updating for sure, but it's really about getting the information that I get access to in council and getting it to all of the residents. The current council will tell you that it's available via public records requests, but that is a pain. We really want to push information to you. I have asked since I've been on council for us to do an annual financial review, an old fashioned town hall in the town hall over our financials, line by line, so that you know everything that you're looking at on that appropriations list. So that when Pat came to town and he saw five million dollars out there, it would have been communicated more freely than what it is. Transparency of government is so important to me and I do not believe that we have it right now. I think the needs assessment will help align what your goals are in the council. I would like to see a performance review done on the government. So Yellow Springs has an online survey that the residents can take at any time. Are we communicating enough?
The next question, Pat will start with you. What opportunities do you see to collaborate with neighboring communities or the counties?
Oh, we need to collaborate with some neighboring communities. We can see who's got the proper equipment for the canal. Maybe we can share that spending that money. I was speaking with Dave earlier before the meeting. We should have collaborated with, I think he said, I can't remember, Washington Township or something, but we should have collaborated with them instead of this building, our building. We can share costs. We can lower health insurance. We've got five people applying for health insurance. It's going to be expensive, but now you've got two, three hundred. You can get a little group, you can lower your expenses. We should collaborate with all of our neighbors and friends and communicate with them. I believe Dave said our town council has only met with the township, our village council has only met with the township one or two times in the past several years. We should be meeting them legally, if not legally.
Okay, here's a few questions. What opportunities do you see to collaborate with neighboring communities or the county?
Probably the best way, I think, to drawing people from outside the communities to some of the events we're putting on here, you know, and that's not necessarily the government's collaborating, but that's maybe the people and the towns involved. As far as government, you know, obviously the county are going to have some more resources than we have, access to things that we have. Having never been involved in government before, I'm not going to pretend there and sit there and try to pretend that all that works, because I don't. But I know that bigger charities maybe sometimes have access to things that we've done and I'm not sure how much we're reaching out to find out how much they've benefited us. But that's definitely something I would look into.
So in order to collaborate with neighboring communities, which I think is a fabulous idea and an opportunity that's been untapped to date, it offers us an opportunity for us to leverage each other's assets. So no longer do we all have to own a backhoe, but one community can own it and we share it or lease it to another community. The township has a lovely meeting room that the council should be able to use. It's got a sound system, the projectors, it's all set up for us, but we're talking about renovating a very little room in our town hall for our council. Let's use the assets that are already out there. Waterville is very successful in running a pool. Use that brain power to help us manage our pool to see whether it's feasible or not. White House has a great social media person. Why can't we invite him into our community to help us with our social media presence? There are so much opportunities for collaboration and leveraging of assets and resources and experience in our local community.
Just to kind of expand on what I'm saying, as far as bringing in people from other communities and stuff, maybe have all those certain things that maybe we could contact. I know, I think Waterville has a marketing person, Perry Group does, as far as what they can do, what they do to actually bring people into town as far as tourism goes. I think that would be beneficial. Working with the county, I'd like to see more, I'd like to see the county be proactive and listen, bringing their deputies to town. I'm not as sure what the frequency is where the deputies patrol town here, but I think it has to be more during the summertime when we've got more people in town here. I know there's, I've got my presidents and staff off the motorcycle and stuff, speaking to town here, but I know there's been
Yeah, yeah. You're on a cycle.
Issues with the stop signs down the bridge there, the axemen, things like that. I'd like to see an improvement on that, a little quicker.
We're now going to move to questions submitted by audience members. These questions were collected beforehand and show to reflect a variety of community concerns. As a reminder, all questions will be asked on me and each candidate will have equal time to respond. I'm going to start with you, though. What things have you done to contribute to the community over the last five years?
Over the last five years, well, I've contributed to involve, as previously mentioned, with the West Council and mainly with the Rally By The River events and also the ninth parade, the holiday parade. And as mentioned by Pat earlier, I've helped clean out the canal. And I'd say I have absolutely no problem doing that. I have no resentment about that. It's easy to, you know, have an argument or discussion about, well, why should we, why are we doing this? Why shouldn't the town be doing it? In my case, it was just simply just want to do it. I didn't ever think that I saw a need, I reacted. And it's, it's taken a good chance for results. You know, we just started driving logs out of the canal and when we were done, nothing better. And I'm perfectly fine with people getting together and doing that.
Okay, so what I did, have you, what have you done over the last five years? So I invested property locally. I renovate every one that I touch. It's always left in better condition than when I received it. I pay taxes on all of those properties. I donated the land where our garden is used, they have free lease there for multiple years. I participate in Rattler Melodies, Cardboard Forgot, and Waterborne Eating Online.
My expertise.
Yeah, my expertise. I did canal cleaning up here, the rural garden, doing it this past year. And on council, I have submitted over thirty ideas per year for every year that I've been on council. I will tell you only one comes to mind, but the council's actually implemented. So thirty ideas per year submitted.
See, I've been involved in the Grand Rovers in town here, the town hall committee, helped out with the river days. We just started with the canal cleanup group the last couple nights. I don't want to try to get involved as much as I can, helped out with the night a couple times. I think it's important, we want to be involved in the town.
As I mentioned, I'm here a little over a year and a half now, so I really can't go back five years. If I do, we came to the house every year and we brought some money for that. Sorry, though, I've been on the last year and a half. I don't know how many of you have been by for a house for the last year. I've put over a hundred thousand dollars in tank, lighting, landscape, and we've got so much more happening. We've got new doors coming in, new windows. We're making a major investment in this town. And I'm not doing that to split the house and sell it to make money. I'm doing it to bring our people in. I've also opened our house up to the Grand Rovers directly. We had you guys in there a few months ago and we gave free tours. Free to me. They paid fifteen dollars each to the Grand Rovers. We didn't ask for a penny, we don't care, we love showing our art. I've been in the Rally By The Rivers volunteering, I've joined a few other groups since then, and we're looking to stay here the long, the long haul.
Next question, we're going to start with you, Lynn. What are your qualifications regarding being elected as a viable and effective village council member?
So prior to the term that I'm in right now, I've never been in a political office. I completely, they never thought about being in a political office. But I have worked for Fortune 500 companies as the director of strategies, your teacher source thing. I have global position. Like Pat, I know numbers, I look at my life by numbers, I know how to make money, I know how to save money, I know how to manage money. I know about procedures, developing teams, collaboration, about putting infrastructure in so that everybody knows what the rules are. I'm very transparent. I want people to know what's going on. I do not want, as Lynn mentioned about being surprised, I do not want the people that we serve to be surprised by our actions. And I'm surprised all the time when council, and I'm a member of it. So, that's my.
As far as qualifications for office, I was on the fire department in Dashford for nearly twenty years, most years of the Soviet era, fire captain, before we moved to here and I was in a position. So I know how to delegate to various areas of the department with us as far as trying to get things accomplished, maintain the resources for the town, the equipment that we had there. I didn't have as much experience with the mountain sheet, although I already have worked in the concrete industry for twenty-five years now, almost twenty-six years. And we have some experience in seeing whether finances still purchase or anything like that, and how to maintain it as a system, keep it going. My biggest thing is probably is public safety. I can't stress that enough. I know that we can get better cooperation hopefully from the sheriff's office and things like that to make the town safer. Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot of public experience.
I have no public experience. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? I guess, by the way. As I mentioned, I'm a former businessman. I'm retired. I know numbers, I know how to run a company. I love negotiating. I posted something today that sat in front of Kraft Heinz, KFC, Almond's, saw woodworking, Sugardale Meats, and hundreds of other Fortune 500 companies looking face to face and negotiating pricing for the year. I'm tough, but I'm fair. And every time I walked away from a negotiation, everybody's gone, good. We need to do that with our suppliers, our vendors. I think we're paying way too much for a few items that I've been breaking to within the budget. And we need to go line, line to line, line by line, and lower some of those numbers and increase others.
So I've never sat on a legislative podium as far as qualifications. I did serve on the I did serve on the board of trustees of the old Grand Rapids Sports Club for several years, and also the Grand Rapids Education Fund, which was a chair of a whole organization we created over there in order to fund donations to people in charities. Being recently retired, I have the time to give, so that's one of the reasons why I think I want to do with my retirement is devote some of my time to the citizens of Grand Rapids. I think my biggest qualification is my perspective and having lived here for a long time, but yet remembering what it's like to come in here from somewhere else, and move in somewhere else. And we constantly have new people coming to town. And sometimes I think sometimes the factions flash between the new people with new ideas and the long-term residents. So I think I've got a unique perspective there, and I'd like to think I'm the type of person that can bridge the gap between those two groups.
Next question, we'll start with Nate. Winter is our slowest time. This winter, the parking spaces were never cowed, and this keeps visitors away, and they don't want to touch the snow and fluff. Many of the businesses clear the streets and fund their businesses. They should not have to do that. How would you fix this problem?
Um, probably the builder must figure this out. It's not the business's job to clear the snow, it's the builder's job. I'm not sure that sidewalks, sidewalks is the builder's job versus the business's job. Can you, you know, clear your own sidewalk, sidewalks, it's time.
Clear your own sidewalks. There's, there's, they build it for, thirty centers is us, and the other half is not, we do it our.
Okay, but this is the builder's responsibility to deep solid streets ultimately. So I would give a chat and say, look, what can we do to?
I think we need to hire a city manager that's actually above the mayor. Maybe find a retired CFO, somebody who knows how to run people, or get the people to do what they need. We need, I think we need to go through all of our people that we have and see if we're the right people for the job. City manager could come in and delegate. And the streets should be cowed. And it should be a good question of who's going to do it. I just think our government needs to be more involved with, like I mentioned, the infrastructure, taking care of things and taking that off of the residents.
Yeah, I'm not worried that there were public, there aren't years that weren't being cowed, so if that's accurate, that's, yeah, that's a real problem. Obviously, you're at the whim of mother nature, you know, it's more of a response. As the winters know, but I guess there needs to be a coherent policy so that the business owners know, you know, for example, if you shovel every sidewalk, and you shovel it into the street, and the plough is coming to take the way, there needs to be some communication there to let the business and the residents know, you know, when this is going to take place.
So I agree, we have to hold the government accountable for providing safe walkways, and it is their job to clear streets and sidewalks. Julie's got a fantastic, you know, articulate description of what is her responsibility versus the council's. But when Mike Marsh is here, the government cowed his too. So it's not consistent, and it needs to be consistent. And the government needs to take care of those sidewalks. I loved Pat's comment about getting a city manager. We cannot enroll biased individuals that are born here, raised here, related here. We need professionals and do their skills, meet the qualifications of the job. And we promote people in the positions they are not qualified, capable of doing. We need to replace them. And we need to hire someone who's managing the village, and that would be a city manager, so I really like that comment.
Go ahead and go. Two seven.
We'll see, we've got more things to do.
And now, of course, some closing statements. As we close, each candidate will have two minutes for final remarks. This is your opportunity to summarize your vision and why your team must take on council and your services.
We have such great natural resources here. We have great people, we have great buildings. Come down the hill, actually today, just before the meeting, we stopped at Friendship there, we drank a couple waters. And I looked out at the river, and it was low, you could see the land and the water, but it was beautiful. We've got such a good opportunity here, and I think with putting a city manager in place, putting the right people in place, managing our money, advertising, marketing, helping small businesses. I'm doing everything I can to keep my property clean, and we need to stay in the business and do that as well. We need people to come here and say, wow. They take that home, they bring their kids out next time. Those kids get older, they bring their kids here. We need to bring people here. This town is a tourist town. It's, it's got to be pushed.
So my opinion might be different than the other season that Pat would be here right now. I think our, actually our village does a pretty good job of taking care of the village and its residents. Yes, there's always room for improvement, but anytime I've had an issue when you go out to them to try to get something solved, I've found that they've been very responsive, and they take care of the problems. So, you know, I don't think things are as broken as some others do. Just my opinion, but, you know. My goal is to get onto council, and again, be a collaborator and return some stability to the meetings so that things can actually get done. And I think right now, there's too much, there's too much bickering, there's just too much angst and anxiety, and things are not being done. And I think the biggest achievement that's happening is the people being able to work together. And I don't know how you accomplish that, you know, with the current makeup of the council, because both sides are pretty well entrenched in their positions. So there, you know, there needs to be some changes. And I'm offering to be one of those to be the change, to come in and not shake things up, but calm things down and return some stability and get some things done.
So I'm a long-term resident, educated, experienced, passionate about this village. I want this village to succeed, I know how to collaborate with people. I do not think our council has done a great job. It is time for change. What you have represented up here, you have finance, safety, strategy, community, data analytics represented up here in these people. I ask you, for the young ones that are out there, what are they offering you? They didn't show up today, and I'm so disappointed, and maybe it was family or conflict or whatever. But I really, this was an opportunity, you see how calm and collected everybody is here. This is how meaning should be brought, right? Everybody exchanging ideas. We don't all agree with each other, the way. I don't agree with, with Don's last comment, but it's okay. He has value to work for me. So I'm hoping that I get another chance, I'm hoping we turn some of the seats over, we turn it over, and I hope like, we look at a city manager and managing this village with professionalism.
First off, I'm sure I missed out on the rest of the candidates' agreement. Thank you all for being here today. It does show that you guys have a concern for what we can see on council people and the direction of the village is going. With that being said, I like, I mean, I love living here, this is a great town. We've been nothing but, everybody that I've met since we've been in town, our business owners, villagers, deliveries alike, have been nothing but awesome to us. And I think that says a lot about what this county has to offer. I just hope that things, that I can be a contributor to keep things going. Also, I could keep things going in the right direction and keep the town stable and keep the residents happy with their, with their officials and women. I appreciate your time today and look forward to your support. Thank you.
At this time, I would just like to thank the candidates for their thoughtful response, and thank you to the community for coming out to engage in this important conversation. Please continue talking to one another and don't forget your vote matters. We encourage everyone to participate in the upcoming election. Join us for the second and final meeting three on Saturday, October eighteenth at ten AM here at the Goldfire Station. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Another thing I'd like to add is, because they both told my note there, thank you to the candidates for making this event a priority. Thank you to our audience for your time and engagement. Thank you to our moderator, Chris Eadie. And Mrs. Angie Domer for keeping us on track. Our cameraman, T, for helping us share this beyond the room. Our registration at seventy-four here, Paul. So, this afternoon reflects the strength of our community, and when we come together, we can truly shoulder harder challenges. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks very much for putting this together.
Please help yourselves for some snacks. We need some.